Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of April 11th, 2024. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2024 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meetings notice. And with that, may I have a roll call of board members and also board and township professionals, please?
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Vanderfleet?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Here.
Mr. Depp?
Here.
Committeeman Leponti?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chigarelli?
Here.
Mr. Peasen?
Present.
Mayor Sirachi?
Here.
Mr. Coys?
President?
Here.
Mr. Leahue?
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We do not have any meeting minutes for consideration or resolutions, no planning board business, and no consideration of ordinances. So I will move to business from the floor for matters that are not in this evening's agenda. If anyone has anything, any comments for the board, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and also please refrain from any discussion of warehouses directly or indirectly.
You're kidding me?
Nope. Been saying that probably for two years now.
Can I ask you a question? When can I comment?
During the application.
I've been asked numerous application meetings, and it never gets open to the public.
Because it's not open to the public yet. You get to do that at the end. You can also cross-examine any witnesses.
Okay, sorry to interrupt, but maybe I'll put it in the paper.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing that, we are moving to public hearing on this evening's applications. I am assuming we...
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. O'Grady gets up, I would ask if the board would suspend the order of business and deal with the Sherman Track Phase 2 first. We have a representative here who wants to explain the situation at hand and probably shouldn't take more than a few minutes.
Okay.
Good evening, board members.
Talking to the mic there.
Yeah, the mic doesn't have long ranges. Keep it close.
Do the hard fire?
Do the hard fire.
Make sure the green light's on. There you go.
Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, board members. My name is Eric Alvarez. I am an attorney with the law firm of the Wine Garden Law Firm. We represent M&amp;M at Camplain Road LLC. We're respectfully requesting that the current application be carried to the next meeting as planned due to an issue with the notice. There were two residents that we could not confirm received proper notice in advance of 10 days. Accordingly, we request that the application be heard at the board's next meeting.
Counsel, for the purpose of the record, can you indicate what your client's objectives are between now and the May 2nd meeting in order to comply with the requirements?
Absolutely. The issue dealt with the fact that we did not receive a proper or a certified mailing list in time. We have since received that certified mailing list, and we'll make sure that, I'm speaking of our firm, that we will be sure to double-check, triple-check all of the notices that go out and confirm that we have adequate time to have the hearing next month.
Any member of the board have any questions, Mr. Alvarez?
Okay, Mr. Coys, was May 2nd?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the board move to adjourn this hearing to May 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard, with renotice, peremptory in nature, that representatives from M&amp;M Camplain LLC be prepared to start their application. This is, and Mr. Alvarez is simply here as my, I will refer to as the victim. They have, we would like this application to start. This is the third time we've been unable to start it. So I would like that provision in there as well.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that provision?
The provision is that we start this hearing on May 2nd.
Okay.
Can I ask just one question? Just a clarification?
Sure.
You are fully prepared to present is strictly you're asking adjournment because of the notice issue only?
It is strictly because of the notice issue.
So we should not have any other issues to be raised last minute at the next meeting?
I anticipate any issues are...
I would expect none. I'm telling you, they better be done. All right.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, so may I have a motion for adjournment this evening, carrying it to May 2nd this year with renotice along with the provision as stated?
I'll make that. So moved.
So moved.
There you go.
There you go. Okay, any additional comments? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Vanderfleet?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Committeeman Leponti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chigarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Peasen?
Yes.
Chair Sirachi?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Sure.
Okay, we are now moving to our first application, G&amp;J Steel and Tubing, Inc., with file number of 24-PB-01-MSPV, with time of decision of July 16th of this year. It's Block 143, Lot 1.01, otherwise known, or commonly known as 301 Roycefield Road. The applicant seeking a preliminary and final major site plan approval, see both variances and waivers to construct a 15,498 square foot building addition to the existing building on the property in the I-2 Light Industrial Zone. And just so that you know, since we have a second application, this one will end around 8:30.
Thank you, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike O'Grady. I'm an attorney at Savo Shawk Law Firm in Somerville. I'm here on behalf of G&amp;J Steel Tubing, Incorporated. We're here seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a 15,498 square foot building addition to the existing manufacturing building to service GNG Steel and Tubing operations. It's a property that's located 301 Roycefield Road in Vincent's Lane. Site access is currently provided via two full-mont driveways along Vincent's Lane. Additional site improvements include construction of a concrete curb, concrete sidewalks, trash enclosure, and associated drainage improvements. This property, as you know, is located in the I-2 Industrial 2 zoning district, where manufacturing use is a principal permitted use. This property is surrounded by other industrial uses and is subject to various recent approvals for other industrial uses. This application has variance relief from Section 188-106. For impervious coverage, 60% is allowed, 66.5% is existing, and under 67% is proposed. I'll have Mr. Ford go over some of the tweaks that we made to get it under 67%, which was a condition of approval imposed on a prior application for a subdivision from 2016. For lot width, 300 foot is required. We're at 250.72. Setback, 50 foot's required. 40 is existing and 25.5 is proposed. Rear setback, 100 foot required. 66.2 feet is existing and 20.9 feet is proposed. Landscape buffering, 20 foot is required. 21.1 existing and 5 feet proposed. And parking, where 60.2 spaces are required and 43 spaces are proposed. The applicant is also seeking approval for one of the two onsite trailers, which are not permitted in the zone and violate the rear yard setback, whereas 100 foot is required and 9 foot is existing and proposed, and the side yard setback, where 50 foot is required and 32 feet is existing and proposed. As for waiver relief, the applicant requests stream corridor protection waivers found in 188-64D to the rear of the lot towards the woods at the end of the cul-de-sac. The proposed improvements will not result in a significant amount of impervious area. When we filed this application, we anticipated an increase of approximately 752 feet. We believe that there will be no increase of coverage. We've proposed roof leaders, catch basins, trench lane, trench drain to mitigate stormwater runoff from the subject site and connect it to the existing stormwater management system within the Hillsborough Township right away. G&amp;J Steel Tubing, Inc. was founded in 1976 and has more than 40 years of fabrication experience. They have 50 employees who've been operating in Hillsborough since 1990. G&amp;J is a production metal tube fabrication company, and we've prepared a video that talks about the operations and takes a look at what they actually do and manufacture. There's numerous employees that reside here in Hillsborough Township, and what they do is they manufacture mid-to-high volume parts for customers. Their services include manual and robotic cutting, bending, coiling, end-forming, hole-forming, stamping, machining, welding, and assembly, fabricating a variety of metals, including carbon steel, stainless steel, copper, brass, aluminum, nickel alloys. Customers include Stanley Black &amp; Decker, DeWalt air compressor coils, and air braking for the Tesla X. This expansion is necessitated and directly related to an award of contract for the production for the manufacturer of handrails for the R21 Kawasaki trains and for the MTA for New York City subways. Other customers include railings for major mass transit systems for New Jersey Transit, specifically for stairway rails and double-decker trains for the Bombardier and handrails for Amtrak systems and trains. Tonight, we have a potential of four witnesses. My intention is to introduce two witnesses. John Tursky, on behalf of the applicant, he's the owner of the company, to go over what he does and why we're here tonight, and why we need this additional manufacturing space. And again, we've prepared a video, an audio-video presentation, that's two or three minutes long, so not too long, that just takes a look at some of the more specifics on the business. We also have Michael Ford from Van Cleef Engineering Associates here to review the existing and proposed site conditions. Rihanna Kirchhoff is our traffic engineer from Dean and Dolan, Dolan and Dean, to discuss any traffic issues, which we don't think we're going to need the testimony. We've submitted a traffic impact study, but she's certainly here to answer any questions. And John Manino is our architect. Again, wasn't going to introduce him, given our limited time, as well as not particularly interesting, I was just going to say interesting, not particularly meaningful architecture for this application.
I'm not sure which one of that is more insulting. So far, just stop while you're ahead, Michael.
So unless there are any legal questions, we provided notice consistent with the MLUL, and I would ask that we swear on all our witnesses.
Okay. Can we generally go one at a time? So that's all for you. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? And we need to use the mic, but could you state your name, please?
My name is John Tursky. I'm president and owner of G&amp;J Steel and Tubing.
Thank you.
Why don't you just give a narration of why we're here and give a history of your business?
Sure, absolutely. So G&amp;J Steel and Tubing, we are currently located at 301 Roycefield Road, and as Michael said, we are a metal tube fabricator. Better. And the presentation shows the current building and a portion of our crew. We first moved to Hillsborough in 1990, and we were at 399 Roycefield Road. Then we moved Catty Corner across the street in 1994 to 406, and now we're currently at 301 Roycefield Road. So you can obviously see we love Roycefield Road. So we've been here for 33 years, and at least 10 of our 50 employees live in Hillsborough Township. One of the products that we produce is the lead screw for the Omnipod, if anybody's familiar with Insulin Delivery System. There's a lead screw that goes into the Omnipod system. We manufacture all those parts at G&amp;J. We produce about 600,000 parts a week of the lead screw. And if anybody has an Omnipod system, you know how terrific they are, and so we are approved for medical on that. And this is the clean room we have in which we are producing and inspecting in the clean room, the lead screws for the Omnipod. Another customer of ours is Stanley Black &amp; Decker. If you've, sorry, if you've been to Lowe's and Home Depot, you've probably, most people own one of those pancake coils. Inside the coils, we have two of our parts. We produce about 40,000 parts a week. We've been manufacturing for Stanley Black &amp; Decker for, since 2014, and we have a fully automated facility where we run these parts robotically. Additionally, we have contracts that are generated out of the infrastructure deal in the US Infrastructure Deal, coordinating with the Department of Transportation in the Buy America Act. One of those contracts is for Bombardier, that's Alston Bombardier. We are making the handrails. You can see where the handrail's going to be used. I'm sorry. I got fat fingers. Excuse me. This is the double-decker parts, double-decker buses for New Jersey Transit. We make the handrails for that system. Additionally, I'll skip that. Okay. And this is a quick video of handrails that we manufacture for the R21 for New Jersey Transit, I mean for New York City. This is how we manufacture the handrails. These handrails are produced at G&amp;J Steel and Tubing. When we first started, we were making about five car sets a month. We are now up to 30 car sets a month. Ultimately, New York City will be purchasing about 3,900 rail cars. All of those will be manufactured at G&amp;J Steel and Tubing. This is the reason why we need extra space. These handrails are pretty big, and they take up a lot of room, and that's the inside of the rail car. That's what it looks like.
MTA rolling out brand-new subways on its tracks, all part of an initiative to increase service.
This is WPIX Local TV, and there's our cars in service. Every one of those handrails was produced in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
...service on the G, J, and M lines. New trains are...
And they launched it on the G and J line. I love that.
...software. Officials say they plan to keep this momentum going. The MTA rolling out...
And there's the rendition of the building expansion. Any questions?
Michael, we're going to mark this as A1.
Yep.
And you'll provide a copy to the Planning Department for Civic...
Sure, I'll email it to DeBora. Mr. Tursky, could you talk a little bit about, you had indicated in my introduction that there's two trailers on site, and that you're asking the board for the one trailer to remain, and I believe it was that clean room. Could you describe why the clean room can't be with the rest of the manufacturing? You want to keep that separate for that insulin device?
Yeah, this is a medical-approved clean room just for the manufacturing of those lead screws. So we need to keep it separate from the rest of the building. It has to be certified. It's, has its own separate security system. It has its own process that's self-contained based on the medical requirements. We don't want to mix that in with the rest of the facility, and that's the reason why we have that clean room trailer.
And just to touch on some of your hours of operations and your employees, what's your anticipation for your increase in, you know, hours, number of employees, demand for parking, things like that?
So the purpose of the expansion is that we, as we ramped up the number of car sets we need to produce for New York City, we temporarily have to house them in our current facility until we ship them. So we really need the space, mostly just for the space required for us to process the current contracts we have. We have no anticipated plans of increasing personnel or increasing any other usage. We just need the space because of the amount of contracts we're producing. In terms of our operations, our typical hours are 6:30 to 11:00. That's two shifts. That spans all the requirements we have. Most of our systems, which you saw in portions of the video, most of our systems are fully robotic, so we don't actually need to increase personnel. We're very stable at 50 and can produce the products that we need to produce.
I have no further questions for the witness.
Mr. Leahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, I wonder if you could help me address one of the comments on our review letter dated April 4th that had to do with potential truck movements. Is it your experience, and would you be testifying that you don't anticipate any trucks delivering greater than the SU40 vehicle that was shown on turning movements?
Yes, most of our materials are delivered in box trucks. Occasionally, we'll have a flatbed, but for the most part, we can handle all of the incoming work and outgoing work using your typical box trucks.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any other questions for this witness.
Thank you, Mr. Coys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Board members, questions? Okay, a motion open to public.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on their testimony, and it's strictly their testimony, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. We are Alpine Construction. We're opposite from John.
Our... Name and address?
What's that?
Your names and address, please.
Joseph Chesla and Kevin Chesla.
Address?
Real 3 Roycefield Road.
Okay.
Our main concern is the parking. As you know, we have...
Do you have a question of the witness? That's what this portion of...
Well, then we have to talk about the parking to you and him, too?
No, no, no. If you want to ask a question of his testimony, you can provide commentary towards the end.
On your parking, you have everybody, and we brought pictures, everybody's parked on the road, makes it impossible for us to get out with our low boy. I mean, we've been running over the lawn, and we've had, we've had your trucks asked to come in to turn around in our property so that they could back up. They're tractor-trailers, they're not box trucks, and they've been running over the lawn. So we have, that's our issues is the traffic. How are we going to handle the traffic and when they're parking on that street? I don't even know if there's parking allowed on that street.
If you can answer the question.
I can answer. I know that in our application, we've had your, we have addressed the parking. We're going to go double-sided, so all of our people then move into our parking lot.
All your 42 spots are going to be in your property?
Yeah, because you notice they park on the street only because we only have one side.
Right.
So we're opening up a second side, so that will fill all those spots.
But the cars that are parked...
Please use the mic, sorry.
Take in the mic. The cars that are parked within the property along where the addition is, there's 15 spots there, are they still going to be there?
Are they getting eliminated?
No, they're all...
Sorry, excuse me, just for the sake of the record, and you know, this is being recorded, if you could just go one at a time, please, and so when you speak, just say your name so that this can be properly, the minutes can be done. Thank you.
My name's Kevin Chesla, and my question is, currently, there's 15 parking spaces where the existing, or where the proposed addition is going. Will those 15 spaces be eliminated?
So I guess Mike should handle the plan. So he has the plan, and I'm sure that's going to address the issue of the parking. So in our plan is the discussion of parking.
Okay, because currently, you have 15 on the side, and just today, I took some pictures, there's 13 on the road. So a total of 28. Are you adding 28 spots to that?
I'll let Michael address it. I mean, we have a plan of appropriate parking for...
I mean, our main objective is just so we can get out.
No, I understand completely.
Everything you're doing is fine. We don't...
Our concern is just getting out of our access.
No, I understand completely. I understand completely.
Mr. Chairman, and I know Mr. Ford's going to speak to this, but to speed things up, I'd be happy to answer the parking question. On Mr. Ford's plans, Sheet 3, it's called Site Plan, it identifies the parking. It identifies 47 spaces existing and 43 spaces proposed.
He still needs to testify. So...
I think it might be best to wait till Mr. Ford gives his testimony.
Okay.
Because I think that's to address any parking issues.
Hi.
Hello. Valerie Parker, 7 Post Court, Hillsborough. I'm a local resident to GJ, and I love everything about this. I have no problem, but could we, this is very superficial, but could you design it a little better, like to make it look, Roycefield Road is not pretty? So if you could design it a little better to make it look like your current building?
Well, actually, this is going to be behind the building, so what you're going to see is what you see today, which is that A-frame, that beautiful...
Yeah, yeah.
Cool A-frame. So this building is behind it. So you're seeing it from the side.
Okay.
The building is being built behind, so it won't change the front profile. So when you drive down Roycefield, you could still be proud of G&amp;J Steel and Tubing.
There. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Any more? Okay, I don't need to formally close, do I? No, okay. Next witness.
Okay, our next witness is Mike Ford, Van Cleef Engineering. He's our professional civil engineer who did the site work on this. And I'm assuming your license is still in good standing, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
First, we're going to swear him in, then he can answer.
Yeah.
If he can't plug the thing in, he doesn't get it. You think you might want to put the plans on the other table?
Yeah.
To you.
Yeah, we need bigger tables.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, a licensed engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and appeared before this board numerous times.
And nothing's changed since the last...
No, it has not.
Excellent.
And what I have on the screens are...
And what I have on the screens are colored renderings of two plan sheets that were submitted as part of the application. We've submitted PDF copies of this to the planning department at the township and it's the existing condition plan, sheet two, with, you know, aerial image color over it. And then the second exhibit is the proposed site plan conditions with that same aerial image and the colorized areas where the onsite changers are taking place.
Can we mark the first one? I'm assuming it's A2. I assume you're starting from there, Mr. Ford.
I can start right there and continue. Okay. So perhaps to pick up right where the discussion left off with regards to parking and perhaps I think it'd be easier actually if I flip back and forth between them is currently.
A3.
There's an, in the existing condition, there are two driveway accesses to the site. And as Mr. Tursky indicated, the parking along the front of the building, along Vincent's Drive, is single loaded. In other words, there's only parking spaces on one side of the driveway. And I'm highlighting that now at the bottom of the page. And then when you go to the proposed condition, one of the proposed improvements we're proposing is to add parking spaces on the Vincent roadside of that access driveway to provide for more efficient parking and bring back the spaces that would be lost by virtue of the addition being constructed over the existing, and I'll go back to existing, the existing loading area with some parking spaces that's on the west side of the building or the left side of the site, as you face it from Vincent's Drive.
Just, Mike, real quick, can you clarify what A2 and A3 were?
Okay, A2 is the existing condition plan sheet two of the plan set. And it's basically the same sheet that was submitted as part of the application except for colorized. And A3 is the proposed condition exhibit, which is the site plan that was submitted as part of the application, again, colorized for this evening's presentation. You're welcome.
Mr. Ford, can you for purposes reference indicate where is home, or is Roycefield and where is Vincent's?
Yes. Roycefield Road is on the right side. That would be the east of the property. Vincent's Lane is accessed to Roycefield. And as I think the one gentleman, the two gentlemen from the public, I think the site that they're referring to Alpine is at the bottom of the page. You can see their access driveway and portion of their parking off of Vincent's Lane. And then Vincent's Lane right now ends in a cul-de-sac, continuing with a description of the surrounding properties, ends with a cul-de-sac. And there is an access driveway at the end of Vincent's Lane, which I understand is access to lands that are part of the LMI Landscape Inc. facility in operation on Roycefield Road, which is just to the south of this site. And then you'll see a wooded area along our westerly boundary. And then at the top of the page or north of our site is an existing or a pre-existing rail right away, which has been abandoned. And then vacant property in front of the prop site along Roycefield and Vincent. And as Mr. Tursky described, probably most people that have been down Vince or down Roycefield Road would recognize the unique architectural characteristics of the existing building, which is like A-frame gables, if you will, looking at it from Roycefield Road. And that won't be interrupted or changed as part of the application. That's this gray colored existing building. The addition is on this exhibit highlighted in beige. And then a substantial portion of the existing impervious coverage to the rear of the building beyond the addition, where there's existing pavement and gravel will be turned to grass. There is one loading bay that would remain in the existing building and I'm highlighting it now at the southwest westerly corner of the existing building with access off the end of the cul-de-sac at Vincent's Lane. And with regards to the outdoor trailers that Mr. O'Grady described and Mr. Tursky discussed, as, as the application was submitted, there are existing gravel areas at the rear of the building and containers that have stored materials, they would be removed and the gravel area would be removed. But as part of the initial application submittal, there are two trailers to the rear of the building, one larger one, and I'm highlighting it now, which is nine feet from the property line. And then the longer narrower trailer that's closest to the building is that medical clean room processing trailer, which we'd like to maintain and keep as part of the application. And the second trailer closer to the property line would, would be removed along with those containers and gravel that are being removed. And what that would result in is a reduction in the impervious coverage. So while the initial application sought relief for a slight increase in existing impervious coverage on the site from 65, I'm sorry, 66.5% to 67.4%, the removal of this existing trailer would bring us under the existing condition of 66.5%. So not only would be below the 67% threshold that Mr. O'Grady outlined as part of his introduction, we would be slightly less than the existing condition. So there would be a net decrease in impervious coverage on the site as part of the application. So that's an existing non-conformity, but it wouldn't be exacerbated or increased as part of the application. And that goes toward the bulk standards, but also will tie into some stormwater management discussion that I'll get to in a moment. So that would be a reduction in impervious coverage by almost 300 square feet. We have other bulk standard requirements that are part of the application. The existing lot width, that setback is an existing and proposed non-conformity camp. It's not being created by this application and would remain, so that relief would be required. With regards to impervious coverage, I just described that, so that relief would be maintained, albeit over 60% allowable, but less than the existing condition. And then there are two side yard and rear yard relief requirement requested, first with rear yard. The proposed addition rear yard is 20.9 feet from the rear property line, while the existing building is 62, 66.2, where 100 feet is required. But we're also eliminating that trailer, which right now is nine feet from the property line. And this is the rear property lining coincident with that abandoned rail line right away. And then with regards to side yard setback, there's an existing condition on the east side of the property, I'm highlighting it now, at 25.5 feet setback that obviously would be unchanged by this application, where 50 feet is required. And then the proposed condition on the west side of the property where the addition is being created, there would be a side yard of 40.6 feet or 50 is required. That's the extent of the relief. There are design waivers with regards to setback to parking along the front. Right now, our setback to parking is approximately 30, you know, 20 feet or 30 feet is required and it would go to 10 feet by creating that second row of parking for a more efficient parking layout with double stacked or, or parking on each side of the access aisle. While I'm turning pages, in my notes, the existing site is serviced by public sewer and water. That would remain unchanged. All the utilities for any needs within the building addition would be serviced through the existing building. So there'd be no new utility connections. And with regards to fire suppression, again, that would be through the existing building into the addition. And we had received a review memorandum from the fire official dated April 10th, 2024, with about eight comments. And we would agree to address each and every one of those comments to his satisfaction as part of any conditional approval this board may grant. So there were no substantive comments from the fire official regarding this application that could not be met by simply addressing the building in a manner to his satisfaction, providing a lot box and other typical comments and requirements for site improvements within the township. With regards to tree mitigation, there are approximately 28 trees or 27 trees on the site now. Eight of those would be impacted by the proposed addition. The township tree mitigation ordinance requires a supplemental planting to mitigate for those A-trees to be removed. We had as part of the initial application proposed a contribution to the township tree fund. The planners memorandum outlines the cost of that. And the applicant would continue to honor that proposal in accordance with the township code. However, there was a suggestion by the environmental commission and we made a visit to the environmental commission a few weeks ago and they outlined their comments in a review memorandum dated April 10th, 2024. And one of the few suggestions that they had made was to try to plant some of those mitigation trees onsite and perhaps even along across the front of the building. And at the board's pleasure, we'd be glad to honor the environmental commission's request and put as many of those mitigation trees onsite and any trees that couldn't be planted onsite would be compensated for in accordance with the ordinance by a monetary contribution to the tree fund. Okay.
Something we said?
Perhaps I can jump rate to stormwater runoff and the, the two review memorandums that I haven't mentioned. First, with regards to stormwater runoff, it's, you know, our intention now, by virtue of not increasing the existing impervious coverage onsite to, you know, any, actually have a net decrease, that there wouldn't be any adverse impact to stormwater runoff from the site. Had a discussion with the board's engineer about concerns regarding stormwater runoff and the comments in their. April 10th is a popular date, April 10th, 2024, review memorandum to the township planning board. And we would agree to address the stormwater runoff comments in the engineer's report to his satisfaction. And if that meant some type of stormwater management BMP, such as a rain garden along the left side or west side of the building, we would accommodate that as part of revisions in accordance with a conditional approval to the board engineer's satisfaction. And we do have a pending application requesting a jurisdictional determination from the Delaware American Alcomission. We received the March 20th report from that agency requesting additional information so that they can make a final determination on the jurisdictional determination. If they were to take jurisdiction, there perhaps would be some type of stormwater management requirements by that agency. And I would just ask that, you know, that would be resolved and that this is, was discussed at the environmental commission as well. Any communication with the, and submittals to the DNR canal commission would be provided in copies to the township planning department. And we would work in with, you know, with the DNR canal commission and your board engineer so that we could address any stormwater management concerns they might have together. I think that's typical of other past applications and projects. Lastly, with regards to comments in the review memorandums by both the town's planner, Mr. Coys, and the board engineer, Mr. Mahu, there is, and this was actually discussed at the environmental commission as well, and I believe it's in their report. At the end of Vincent's Lane, there's existing stormwater, and I'm highlighting it now, collection system that has a pipe extending off the end of Vincent's Lane and then discharges to a ditch that then continues to run in a westerly fashion away from our site. Our drainage from our site predominantly drains toward that point and toward the west. There was comments about whether that ditch should be classified and, and accommodated for as part of the township's natural features section of the ordinance, 188-64, and the required stream quarter setbacks be accommodated. If you, from that ditch went 150 feet in either direction from the top of the bank of that ditch, and I'm highlighting it now, obviously that would be off our site. But if you actually took that 150-foot quarter and arced it back toward Vincent's Lane, that would clip the end of Vincent's Lane and some of our existing, our existing westerly driveway, as well as some of the existing parking, which is also slated to, to continue as part of the proposed parking. So in the interest of a conservative viewpoint, applying the 150-foot stream quarter from the end of that pipe that discharges to the ditch back onto our site, I would request that the board consider it a hardship that the existing conditions already being in that area onsite, those existing conditions include disturbed areas that don't really serve any environmental benefit to the stream quarter in their current condition and that the board could grant a relief in the form of a waiver for those existing and proposed conditions to, you know, be maintained due and virtue of the hardship of the existing site layout. And to the extent we can continue to preserve existing trees along our property line, we've endeavored to do that. And then, let me just go specifically. So I've, I've spoken to the environmental commission report. I'll go to the, it's April 4th, April 4th, 2024, review memorandum to the board by Panoni Associates. I've spoken to the stormwater management. Other details I can highlight at this time is that we proposed three make-ready EV charging stations. Mr. Coys points out in his review memorandum that only two are required, so we'll provide the minimum two, but they're make-ready and that would be something that could be converted or completed as electric vehicle charging stations. And the proposal complies with the township ordinance and the state statute regarding EV charging stations. So we'll fully comply. The existing parking area that's along the front of the building would remain and not be resurfaced. That is in good condition. I've spoken to the tree mitigation. There's comments in the review memorandums regarding wetlands and I'll go back to the existing conditions. So all of the proposed improved, site improvements are over existing loading, parking, disturbed areas. areas. There's no wetlands identified on the site. We've submitted to NJDEP a freshwater wetland, a letter of interpretation, presence-absence determination request at DEP. So we have that application pending. The only item that I would offer for the board's consideration, and I had a conversation with one of the staff members today about this, is the hardship that the current state operation presents on applicants. We're, we're understanding that the, due to staffing at the NJDEP, that these LOIs are not processed very timely, and this is not a significance, you know, size project. It's an expectation that we'd go to construction as soon as possible, you know, given, you know, we secure all the outside agents, you know, all the approvals necessary. The freshwater wetland footprint of disturbance is really an insurance request. It's not a permit that's required. We're not disturbing any wetland areas. We're just seeking the state's verification that what we believe is true, which is there are no wetlands on the site, and we're not disturbing any wetlands. So what we would suggest is, to the extent the state's or the township staff could help us prod the state to review this in a timely fashion, we, you know, welcome that and that it not be a specific condition of approval in the sense that the, it's an outside agency, it's not under the jurisdiction of the township, and the township or the applicant could, at his own risk, proceed without that verification, because it's not a permit to do something, it's just a verification that you're not disturbing any regulated areas. And the areas that we're disturbing now are all existing disturbed areas. So what I would also offer for the board's consideration, if there were a determination that there were, I'll say a wetland buffer, it wouldn't be a wetland because it's, it's all parking and loading now in disturbed areas, but a wetland buffer, there are permits available for special activity waivers for redevelopment of areas that are already disturbed within the wetland buffer. So even in the most oddly unlikely situation where something's identified as regulated, there is a permit available to do it. But our preference would be to get the NJDEP freshwater wetland exempt, I'm sorry, letter of interpretation. It's only really the timing of it, because I'm being told it's a year to two years for those types of processes, although this is a very small project. I think that really, unless there's something in the professionals' reviews that I need to speak to, or...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ford and I have spoken earlier before the meeting, and based on Mr. Ford's testimony this evening and their willingness to introduce a small BMP, our office is confident that the stormwater issues would be resolved. Based on Mr. Ford's testimony about the potential wetlands off-site, our office would be comfortable proceeding without waiting for a New Jersey DEP presence-absence determination. Could we put in one condition? If they did find something, your office would pursue the appropriate permits?
Absolutely, yes.
And based on Mr. Ford's testimony this evening, I do believe a case has been made that prohibiting the activity within the stream corridor could present a hardship based on the configuration of the lot and the configuration of existing improvements on the lot, and considering the fact that there's existing driveway entrance and paving in the corridor in this location now. I think there was just one last item that wasn't touched upon. Our office had pointed out that some of the proposed wall pack lighting, it would be preferable to have it downward facing to block the luminaire, if your applicant would agree to that.
Yes.
That would address all of our concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All of the questions I had were addressed by Mr. Ford. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Ford, for purposes of the record, during your testimony, you indicated that regarding the tree mitigation, your client was willing to plant them not only on-site but on a contiguous site. Is that correct?
Yes.
For the purpose of the record, and I believe that's A3 up there, could you indicate whether or not the, where your client's contiguous property is?
This front lot.
And that, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, according to the environmental commission, is block 143, lot 11.04?
Yes.
And your client is proposing to put trees on that site as part of its obligation under the tree mitigation?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how many trees?
It's 28 trees for the mitigation. Right now, we, we have the green area that we're establishing at the rear of the property. There'd be additional green area by the removal of the one trailer, and then there's an opportunity along the front of the building to plant trees. So it's 28 in total.
Approximately how many trees is your client proposing to build along the front of the building?
We haven't developed a landscape plan for that yet, so there's not...
Your client also willing to commit that if he should develop and/or sell the property for development, that the trees they plant in the front on this 1104 will remain? Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Board members? Questions?
Clarification on the parking situation, once again, who would the appropriate person to ask the question?
Yes.
Just before, how many parking spots exist here? How many are proposed?
So there's, there's 47 existing, and many of those are in this rear loading area, which might not serve as parking spaces on a daily basis because of materials stocked back there. So that's the 47 existing. 43 are proposed. And I also, as part of the discussion with Mr. Mahu this morning, we did actually also talk about another potential minor change to the plan that I think would be an improvement, and that is, we had proposed a trash enclosure along the westerly driveway, and I think it was, you know, suggested that we relocate that to the end of the alley for the truck moving, truck turning templates, and then that would offer an opportunity for two additional parking spaces where the trash enclosure is being proposed now. So that would bring us up to 45 parking spaces.
So let me see if I understood this right. Forty-seven existing?
Correct.
My microphone.
Thank you. Forty-seven existing, and, sorry, 47 existing, and once re-architected, it's going to be a total of 43? Is that what it is?
That's what it is on the plan now, and I just described a change that would make it 45. Correct.
I quickly, this is just for my own identification, I pulled up the Google map here, right? Just a snappy, you know, point kind of picture, a satellite picture from the sky. The west side of the property, right, I see there about, you know, like packed together about 19 cars, right? So I'm assuming that's where the 15 would be, right? And then on the south side here, there are about 19 more, and I believe the gentleman from your neighborhood, that's probably was his concern as well. There were four on his property, as I see. So 19 on the south side, 19 on the west side.
When you say on his property, you mean parked on Vincent's Lane?
Right, that's what it appears on the... So at this time, I'm looking at about 38 right in here, right? And it seems like a pretty packed space. We still think there is, there could be 43 more parking spots out here. Is that what it is?
The proposal is 43, and I just described a change that would make it 45. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
On-site?
Mr. Ford, a couple things I wanted to touch on. Mr. Deb talked about some. So based on the square footage, the required number of spots are 61 or something to that effect?
Well, 61...
60.9.
Excuse me?
60.9.
Yeah, 61, but actually the provisions now with EV charging stations give you credit so that, and this is outlined in one of the board professionals' review memorandum, the required is 58. So we are deficient. We're seeking relief.
So also, the fire, you know, the fire lane, I'll call it, which has delineated the no parking fire lane, which I'll call, which is the west side of the building, where that's just basically open to be left open for the truck to turn around, and in case of there's a fire, no parking, nothing's to be stored there. And I didn't see in the, the fire department's review memorandum, they didn't request any kind of access to the back of the building for their apparatus in case of a fire?
That's correct.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's actually why we thought of the shift in the location of the trash enclosure, because there's not a request for any access down that westerly side of the building.
And second, there is an indication of a fence that's existing. Is that a gated fence?
Yeah, it's across the driveway, right.
So that's a gated fence to...
Correct, for security.
So the, I think, Mr. Bernstein, I said the lot 1104 is owned by the, by G tubing?
I don't know the legal, whether it's just one party or the same parties, but there is some stake in that ownership, correct?
Was there any conversation of that lot line that kind of makes an S-turn there to be straightened out, to be added, A, more square footage to the lot, and then possibly add some parking there to take up the missing spots?
There hasn't been any discussion in that regard.
It was interesting. I didn't know that there was possibly the same owner, which would allow for a simple lot line adjustment to give them that additional parking. So here's, here's my concern, though I appreciate the owner and the history he has in Hillsborough and wish he stays here, you know, so if at some point he would decide to move to a bigger facility and somebody else would move into this facility, I'm concerned about the deficiency in parking that is, that is presented in this plan. And, you know, that's, and also, class, I'm kind of concerned that the fire department didn't ask for an access to the back of the building like they have for other buildings of this size for fire trucks. So moving the trash enclosure to the end of that parking area or that area would preclude, if they had to, to get a vehicle back there, would prevent them from, if they had to drive on the grass, from getting back there.
Right, and that, that actually is the area, that's the area that the board's engineer had suggested for some stormwater mitigation BMPs too. The green area, not the, obviously, the paved area, but...
Do, I guess, the, so in the past, the back lots were being utilized for storage, so that was the problem with the deficiency in parking, that people didn't actually have the lots available to use because they were storing stuff in the parking lot?
Right, there's, there's parking in the loading area, but on one of my visits to the site, I saw materials in that, this, this area back here. So it wasn't fully utilized. There were some cars parked there, but... And we've had lengthy discussions with the applicant and their operation, and they feel that the proposed number of parking spaces is adequate for their operation, and as Mr. Terzky, you know, testified and presented, while the building size is increasing, much of their operation is automated, and this is also warehouse storage area for, for the operation, the staging.
How many people, and maybe you don't know that answer, maybe, are, it's a two-shift there, how many employees are there for each shift?
I think that'd be better for them, you know, them to answer directly. I think it's approximately 50 total, but I don't, that's, that was, was already discussed this evening.
That's all I have for now. If any of the board members might have some follow-ups.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Can you leave a two up on the screen we should have now, Mr. Ford? There appears to be two access points to the building, is that correct?
There's two access driveways.
Yes.
Yes.
One off the cul-de-sac, and one which appears to be beyond the current property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Your client has an easement for that access?
It's, was recorded as part of the, actually, there was a subdivision that was processed by this board, 2017, that created the front lot. And I don't have knowledge of just what rights were established as part of the title for that, Mr. Bernstein.
Were you the engineer at that point?
No, I wasn't.
Or was it Mr. Hyble?
No, it was Engineering and Land Planning Wayne Ngurum.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually referenced their minor subdivision as part of the application.
So you have no idea why the subdivision was proposed?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, we have a motion open to public. Well, yeah, that's true. Yep, we're still open, so, all right. If there's anyone from the public that would like to question Mr. Ford on his direct testimony, please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Chesla, 303 Royce Field Road in Hillsborough. And this gentleman over here who went on Google pretty much hit it on the money. There's like 19 cars on the left side, the westerly side, that I'm assuming is going to be eliminated, the parking will be eliminated?
Yes.
And I just have some pictures I took today. I made some copies for everyone, if they would like them. Maybe short a few copies.
Right.
So there's approximately 15 on, 15 cars on the left side, and there's about 15...
Sir, before I pass these out, who took the pictures, when they were taken?
I did today.
And what did they show?
They show the cars both in his lot but also on the road.
Sir, I need to square you, all right? Did you raise your hand?
Sure.
You tried to test one of these nicely, but all choose one of them.
I do.
Send your name and work, or you could just spell it for me, please.
K E V I N C H E S L A.
I suggested they have no parking. What for parking, to add parking?
As I understand, there's a deficiency in parking, so ultimately, when this is all done, there still will be 10 or so cars still on the road. Our big concern is just that we can get out of our driveway. If, they're welcome to park wherever they want, but if we could have a no parking zone from our driveway to his easterly driveway heading towards Royce Field, we would have the swing radius with our tractor-trailers to get in and out. We have a 70-foot lowboy tractor-trailer, and it's impossible for us to make a right turn out, or actually even a left turn in, without running over our lawn in our entrance way, which you could see in picture two. And if you go to picture three, that's actually a tractor-trailer that's pulling out of the back of John's property, and you could see, if I was to park a car on my side there, there's no way that that tractor-trailer would have the clearance to get out. And it's basically what we have, we're experiencing now. what we're experiencing now. Now, even whether it's only four cars or 10 cars or visitors, parking in front of our driveway is the ideal spot to park for even a visitor, because it's closest to his front door when there's no interior parking. So all we're really looking for is like if Vincent's could be designated no parking, striping on the road, and maybe a couple parking, no parking signs for whatever that may be, 75 or 100 feet or whatever, between our driveway and John's driveway, we would be able to get in. And the cars could park anywhere, including on our side. You know, we don't mind that. We just are hindered on getting in and out. It's basically, covers our parking issue. Other than that, we're perfectly happy with everything that John's doing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Kevin, sorry. Can you come back up? I have a couple of questions about the pictures.
Sure.
And we're going to mark this, Mr. Chairman, P1 for public. You indicated you took them today. Roughly what time of the day?
Can see if I have it, if my camera tells me, but it was probably afternoon, after lunch today.
Okay.
I don't know. The photos. 1:27 PM was the one with the tractor trailer pulling out of the driveway.
And what about the others?
They're all within minutes of one another.
Okay. So roughly between 1:15 and 1:30 this afternoon?
I would have to go to each picture, but somewhere after lunch.
Are any of the cars, to your knowledge, from your business?
No. No. That's a typical day on any given day.
Are cars normally parked in the, beyond the cul-de-sac west? I see one car in picture four.
Yeah. Picture four shows four cars in the parking lot. And yes, that's also employees
Did you see, when you were taking these pictures, any empty spaces in the parking lot?
Well, people come and go all day. So there may be one or two that pops up, but as soon as one pops up, the other ones close in. Early in the morning, like I said, that's a typical day throughout the day, whether it's 1 o'clock or 9 o'clock in the morning. That's basically the congestion that's on the road there.
One last question, sir. Picture seven. Is that a landscaping truck?
Yes, that's a trailer. And I think John uses the same landscaper as we do, if I'm not mistaken, right? And right there, that picture happens to be of wood chips being spread on John's property. You could see the guy with the pile of wood chips.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Everyone gets to race up here, so...
Susan Gulliford on Club Road. I have a question. The yellow line is showing the outline of the lot?
Correct.
Okay. And to the left is woods and to the right is grass?
Correct.
Or farming grass. Which, to the left or the right is, I didn't realize they owned one, or in some form, one of them owns one of those properties. Is it the one on the right?
Correct.
Okay. I want to follow up on what Shawan asked about. It seems as though you could eliminate the hardship of the existing lot, and eliminate a lot of your variances, if you could adjust that lot line over to the right, even if it involved a purchase between two different corporate entities. Why wasn't that considered? Any idea?
Well, actually, it wouldn't help us with our relief, because the addition, the front of the building right now, it's because of the existing configuration, the current building has offices across the front, so it wouldn't, and that's where the side yard setback is already 25 feet. The addition where the non-conformity is, is on the west side, not on that right side or east side, where the, so that new relief with the side yard setback is, with the addition on the west side, not the east side. So moving this property line wouldn't eliminate or make the, you know, the side yard setback relief any better.
If they, okay, they've had to move the business three times, was it, already? And it appears to be a growing business. I was just wondering why they didn't just merge the lots and do their expansion from there, which would also help with your stormwater management.
Well, the stormwater were not increasing the impervious coverage from existing conditions. So overall, that should have no adverse impact. And then it's really primarily due to the existing configuration of the existing building and that type of structure. And like I just said, with the office, it would be a situation where, and I'm sure the applicant can, you know, speak to this perhaps in a more direct way than I can, but it's, it would be also if the warehouse and storage area, or the storage area wants to be on the west side of the building because of the existing building's operation. Doesn't want to, doesn't fit from an operations standpoint to put in addition or expand on the east side of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ford, I notice that there are already three, let's round up to four, spots in Lot 1104. So moving the sight line is kind of moot, because there's already spots, there's already parking spaces on that lot. So would it be helpful to consider making up the deficiency in parking spaces in that area? We might lose a tree, but there's already lots, so it kind of, you don't have to move the property line, because there's already spaces on 1104. And if you expand that out, you might be able to make up that deficiency. So is it something to consider?
Unless they're already part of the count.
Pardon?
Unless they're already part of the count.
Yeah, they're part of the count. That's the access driveway. But to your point, on the opposite side of that, where the, where there is a tree?
Yeah.
Where we're expanding along the Vincent Lane side. Visually, it looks like there's room for another four or five spaces in that area that would, would, again, encroach onto that neighboring lot, just like the driveway and the other existing spaces do.
Right. So there might be some flexibility there.
Yeah. And the applicant would agree to that. I mean, we do shared parking access easements all the time, especially in more urban areas. So we could work with your engineer to both address the turning radiuses and any signage and any lines that would facilitate proper turning movements out of the adjacent property's driveway. And we would certainly, you know, contribute the cost necessary for the signage, as well as the lines and any of the off-site parking that could be subject to a cross-access parking easement.
Just for the purposes of record, members of the board, I'll remind you that parking on Vincent's Lane is not in your purview. It's in the purview of the Township Committee.
I'll take that under advisement.
Wow. I'm just making the point that, what I'm making the point, I appreciate, John, is that if there were to be a condition on it and the committee were to decide not to take that into consideration, the condition wouldn't be applicable.
Mr. Chairman, if I could help clarify what the applicant may be making a suggestion to the board that would have to be considered by council, if the engineers were asked to look at that issue, I wanted to clarify, are we looking at introducing, say, a WB50, turning out of the property across Vincent's Lane, making a right-hand turn out and a left-hand turn in, and suggesting parking restrictions to allow that movement unrestricted? And also making sure that we consider trucks turning into the subject property and out of the rear exit? I see heads being nodded, so I...
Yeah. I understand what Mr. Mayhew is suggesting, and that's, you know, an engineering exhibit that would help identify exactly the suggested limits of the on-street parking.
Okay.
Where the signage might need to go.
And just looking at the plan, that still leaves opportunities on Vincent's Lane for on-street parking.
Correct. Yeah.
That's all three access? The two on the current property and the one across the
Let's clarify. I don't believe the goal is to provide truck entrances to the eastern driveway to the subject property.
Correct. That would also have to be somewhat, that would have to also be addressed accordingly.
Well, I let the applicant describe whether there's a need for that or not, but if there's not, what I think Mr. Ford and I are saying is, introducing these turning movements still would leave on Vincent's Lane on-street parking available. That would not inhibit the terms we're trying to accommodate.
I know that we're going to have to come back again, but could we entertain with our engineer, as Mr. Keanu Chikari always said, to possibly look at parking along this radius there, since it's already in an easement, that would give us another 7, 10 spots? Well, you know, we're going to have to come back, so you guys can discuss that kind of, and then present that again later. Because you're going to have trees that are going to have to take down.
There was actually in the board engineer's comment that there may be another tree or two that would be impacted, and that would change our mitigation. We're still compliant with the tree ordinance. So the final plan would obviously have to, you know, comply and mitigate. So if the number of mitigated trees goes from 28 to 33 or what have you, we would accommodate that with the landscape plan. And we could look at the parking along the right side of that entry driveway as well.
Yeah. I was just going to suggest, Mr. Leponti, that maybe the easier, more efficient addition to parking would be, as Mr. Ford, I think, touched upon, is adding five spaces along the road that's designated as 17, up against Vincent's Lane. I think, Mr. Ford, you alluded to that earlier.
Right. Yeah, I'm highlighting that on the exhibit now.
Okay.
Right there.
Because those spaces would be perpendicular to the aisle, would be safer pulling it out, and there's less impacted trees and utilities.
Okay. I'll leave it up to you guys to come up with a plan. But I think, I think we should get closer to that 60 spots, if possible.
I got two minutes before break time, so I'm not sure there's enough time to introduce a new witness.
Mr. Chairman, we're not planning to introduce any more witnesses at this time. We, as I said, we do have an architect here to answer any questions or any comments, as well as our traffic engineer. But I'm comfortable in resting on the testimony addressing the comments from the board professionals through the applicant and our engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I think it should be the option of the board, if they want the traffic engineer and/or the architect. I think their engineering issues have been raised along with the parking. And it probably makes sense for this to continue to another meeting.
I agree.
Your availability, Mr. O'Grodnick and your clients, for May the 9th, since you're going to be here anyway.
I'll be here.
Asking for help, yeah. The proposal, Mr. Chairman, is May the 9th, it would be after a couple of applications that Mr. O'Grodnick will be here for anyway, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard without further notice.
So you go with Mr. O'Grodnick? May 9th?
Yep.
May 9th, you'll have your, okay. May I have a motion? Okay, Mr. Deb moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brager?
Yes.
Mr. Vanderleed?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah.
Mr. Leponti?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chikari?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beazin?
Yes.
Pierce Roger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll take...
Mr. Chairman, before we take the break, please just note my recusal on the Homestead Road matter.
Okay. Thank you.
I also believe Mr. Vanderleed is going to be departing at the break.
Right.
Anyone behind me, are you two, you're staying or leaving? You can't, you're just safe. Are you staying?
Okay.
All right. 15 minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, 15 minutes. We'll convene sharp at 8:45. Okay, we're back in session. We've got our next applicant, Homestead Road LLC, file number 21-PB-25-MSPV, time of decision of May 1st of this year. The application is being continued from our March 7, 2024 meeting, without further notice. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to start with counselor to introduce themselves.
Sure, yes.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Craig Janetti, the law firm, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC.
Okay, objectors, roll call.
Go with objector number one, Mike Pissaro, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute.
Objector John Rannahan? Objector two, Scott Gross.
Brian Tarantino, representing the lot.
We don't have the fifth objector tonight.
No fifth objector. Taking it easy.
Note that the objector from Southland isn't here tonight.
Correct.
Excuse me.
So good evening, again, Chairman, members of the board. This is a continued application for preliminary final major site plan and minor subdivision approval for property located at 189 and 203 Homestead Road in Hillsborough Township. Property located in the T E C D Transitional Economic Development District Zone, where the applicant's proposing two warehouses on the two subject lots to be created as part of the subdivision. We've had a number of hearings after the application. I think I lost track, but we're in the double digits. We were last here on March 7, and we presented the, or continued, I believe, the testimony of Ed Cook, our environmental wetlands and flood hazard area expert, an ecological expert. We finished cross-examination by the numbered objectors. He also was subject to cross-examination by the public. And when we hit the witching hour, it was, I believe, four members of the public that were left or had their hands up to ask questions of Mr. Cook. So he is present. And Mr. Cook, you recognize that you remain under oath?
I do.
So we're prepared to proceed and continue with the public questioning.
Do I need to reopen?
You need to open.
Okay. May I have a motion to open to public?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, if there's anyone from the public that would like to ask Mr. Cook any questions of his testimony, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Gail Martin, Hillsborough Road.
Hey, Ms. Martin, just for the record, you're not represented by any of the objectors?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
With respect to your right to farm and the reduced buffer requirements, do you believe that the buffer requirement impact for these two huge warehouses is better for our environment than farming? And if it must be done, is this the best way to do it? And if it must be done, is this the best way to do it?
I guess we break that up into a few different questions. I guess start with the first question, I believe, was-
Do you believe the buffer requirement impact for these two huge warehouses is better for our environment than farming?
Gail, thank you for that question. Excellent question. The issue arises based upon a characteristic of the existing property, okay? And, and what we have is with, with the proposed project is incorporating the township's stream corridor ordinance, which is, requires 150-foot buffer zone to the stream, which is terrific, in my opinion, okay? And what that enables it to do is to protect the habitat and, and provide benefits to the streams and so on and so forth. With regard to right to farm, and again, I don't want to get any farmer in the audience angry at me, but unfortunately, the ugly truth is farming can be one of the more detrimental land uses toward a resources. And with regard to the right to farm, what one is permitted to do is with a 35-foot buffer, that's just a 35-foot buffer to a stream, okay? One can put down herbicides, pesticides, no erosion control, no flood control measures, okay? And a farmer's allowed to do that, and that's fine, because that's their right to farm. When you have a change of land use, what this change of land use will do is, yes, it will incorporate two warehouses and everything, but with the, with the recommendations and the requirements to accommodate the added buffer zones and then with the different types of plantings that would be recommended and so on and so forth, I think at the end of the day, from a water resources standpoint, it's gonna be in a, in a better shape because of the buffering, because it has, this project has to comply with the New Jersey Stormwater Management Regulations, which are the toughest in the country. With regard to water quality, flood control, and things like that, I, I think at the end of the day, from a, from a water resource standpoint, the water resources are gonna have a better net gain.
In your testimony, you stated that this was a lesser evil. I'm confused, as a Bugs and Bunny guy per your testimony, do you really believe that farming is worse than warehouses?
That, that's a loaded question, okay? Because just like I said, if a development is done correctly, and if a development or, or a change in land use accommodates benefits to the ecological resources that a farming activity won't, then it could be. If it can incorporate the creation of grassland bird habitat, which presently doesn't exist, and if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be actively farmed, you're not gonna have grassland bird habitat. But with an alternate use, one can require that this type of habitat be created and maintained. So at the end of the day, it can have a benefit.
Why do you think there are no town, county, and state programs to preserve architectural land and agricultural land, and no such programs dedicated to build warehouses?
Objection, A, assumes facts not in evidence, and B, that's beyond the scope of his testimony.
Okay. Mr. Gray, you could just say you can't answer that.
I can't answer that.
Okay.
Not that I don't want to answer it, but I can't, that's not my specialty.
We'll talk outside.
Okay, sounds good.
You speak of the alien invasive plant species on the property in a very negative way. Do you believe that two huge warehouses and associated impervious surfaces better than vegetation?
The, the alien invasive species that presently dominate the property have minimal, if any, use to, to wildlife resources, from a food standpoint, from, from a habitat standpoint, and so on and so forth. So, so there, you have to understand that an alien invasive species is, is a detriment to the existing ecological value, all right? If you can have an alternate land use that then incorporates the, the creation of quality habitat, again, that's quality habitat with quality habitat components that didn't exist there at present, then it would be, it would be a benefit, yes.
You also mentioned in your testimony proposed grasslands on the site. How many acres is the proposed grasslands?
I believe if the area that I was hoping for in a, in a central area, which my recommendation was, I think it, overall, with the contiguous corridor and the other corridors associated with it, it could be planted, I think was in upwards of 20 acres.
Do you believe the size of the developer's grasslands is better than the current vacant land of over 50 acres?
I do, yes.
In your opinion, what is the optimal grassland size for our native birds?
Thousands of acres. Unfortunately, that's, that's the impact that grassland bird species are having, is, is their, you know, large contiguous tracts of habitat just don't exist anymore. You can have, you know, certainly any habitat that you can create that's, you know, in excess of five acres can certainly be utilized by grassland species. Obviously, the larger the better. What would I like to see? I would like to see thousands of acres, that would, that would be nice. And thousands of acres maintained, but unfortunately, we don't get that. But anything over five acres that's maintained in that kind of habitat should be utilized to some extent by those grassland species.
You said that this is not a prime corridor for bird habitat. Why do you believe this?
Because of the habitat associated with the corridor. Now, with, remember what I did say, is the stream corridor habitat associated with this property and properties to the north are really good, okay? That's was, was my recommendation, not even just from a water resource standpoint, but just from a habitat standpoint, to preserve it, to protect it, and, you know, to all extent possible. From an overall standpoint, we, we no longer have an undeveloped, you know, 1,000-acre corridor anymore, okay? We, we've got development, we have residential development, we have 206 bypass. So therefore, we have to start looking at the property specific, and that's why we have it with regard to the stream corridor and the other contiguous grassland birds habitat that we want to create, or that I want them to create.
And you also said that birds, birds need trees in their habitat. Do you believe cutting down over 200 trees supports that?
With regard to the trees where they, well, first of all, within the stream corridor, which is a wooded habitat, they're, you know, with the exception of their utility line crossing and their stormwater outfall structures, there, there is no disturbance of those trees in there. You know, sporadic trees throughout, now, remember, again, a lot of the trees that are throughout this particular property, again, are, you know, honey locust, alanthus, not higher-quality trees. Where I would consider the highest quality to be is where my recommendation was to the project, to incorporate these buffers to that stream corridor and create habitat where they can.
There was a sighting of a bald eagle on Willow Road not far from the proposed site. Do you think this building-
Objection. Why? She's asking a question, and there's no evidence of a sighting of a bald eagle.
I have a picture that's stamped, that's dated.
First of all, why don't you let her ask the question before you object, Counselor, then we'll see whether or not we go from there.
Thank you. There was a sighting of a bald eagle on Willow Road not far from the proposed site. Do you think the building will affect them? I have a picture with the location and date stamp if you need it.
Before you answer, don't, before, before you, Mr. Gianetti-
Deep breath.
Ms. Martin, would you come forward? With the picture, show Mr. Gianetti the picture.
I have to get my phone.
Well.
I'm kind of object.
It's fine, but show you the picture, and then you can do whatever you want, but I'm just, you know, let's at least try to maintain the record. You may not like the picture, you may not think it has any value, but at least let's see it. Mr. Gianetti?
I'm sorry, it's your, again, I mean, she, she hasn't been sworn in.
Well, we can do that quickly enough, Mr.-
You're sorry we did that already.
Did you swear in testimony you give, or tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, not the truth?
Yes, I do. 237 Hillsborough Road, Gail Martin.
I mean, she hasn't laid any foundation for the picture.
First of all, I wanted her to show you the picture, so at least you weren't dealing with it in any abstract. If, Ms. Martin, for the purpose of the record, so that Mr. Gianetti can put a much more complete objection on the record, can you indicate who took the picture, when the picture was taken, and what does it represent?
A neighbor of ours took a picture.
There's your, problem number one. Okay. Who is the neighbor who took the picture?
Suzanne.
Then-
You're not allowed to speak, though, on the SWAT.
Then I would suggest that at the appropriate time, when Mr. Tarantino presents his objection testimony, that would be the time to address the issue, and Mr. Gianetti will address it at the appropriate time, and the expert witness can't testify on it at the moment.
Again, it, I guess from, and I'll leave it to-
We're not, he, your client isn't gonna-
He's talking, I can't talk.
His client, your client isn't gonna answer the question. The picture is not in evidence. If at some point, the individual who took the picture is introduced by the objector, who, she's a member of, that's when we'll cross that bridge with the picture.
Agreed.
Next question.
Move on, Ms. Martin.
I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Martin, for the purpose of the record, can you have Mr. Tarantino provide that picture to everyone?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Good evening, Innisiv River 24, Tally Ho Trail. Mr. Cook, I would like to clarify some things. So last meeting, you talked about how the land proposed for the warehouses overgrown with invasive species, right?
Correct. The majority.
Autumn olive, yeah, and such. And you said if left alone, will have only more invasive species. If it's farmed, it will, if it's farmed, it's the most harmful for the waterways. So it sounded that the enormous warehouse is a very good option for this land. So my question is, are you familiar with sustainable and restorative farming? Are you familiar with environmental-
One question at a time.
Oh, sorry.
And for purposes, and for purpose of the record, you are not represented by any, you're not a member of or represented by any of the objectors?
No.
Thank you.
So are you familiar with-
Sure.
Sustainable and restorative farming? Are you familiar that there are farmers who actually care about the land?
Ma'am, one question at a time. You've got multiple questions, there, ask him the first question.
I understand what you're asking. Yes, I am familiar with that.
Are you familiar with environmental organizations that actually remove invasive plants, plant native species, and restore habitats?
Yes.
Do you agree that there are better options for this land than building this huge warehouse, especially taking into consideration that it will be operational 24 hours, that means during night disturbing the wildlife?
If you can answer.
Toward the mic. With, with regard to the utilization, I, I've never said that, you know, hey, the best land use on a property is to build warehouses, or residential houses, or what have you, okay? What my testimony indicated was, per the existing conditions of this property, as it is, what would happen if it was left alone, or what would happen if it was developed in a manner that's, that's being proposed, okay? Fortunately for me, I'll say it again, because everyone likes the Bugs and Bunnies guy kind of thing, you know, it's not my job to get a project approved, okay? My job is to say what's on a property, and what impacts a proposed project will have on a property, okay? It's, it's not, I haven't been asked by the municipality to say, hey, could you recommend the absolute best land management program for this property? So all I have to work off of is, what do we have out there now? And with what's being proposed, how can I recommend, or put recommendations in that will minimize ecological disturbance and maybe even benefit it?
Okay, thank you. So how about the, the fact that this warehouse is allowed to operate during night, so it will be noise and light pollution?
That's correct. And with the, you know, with, with the buffering that has the stream corridor, with the, with regard to the extent and continuity of what my recommendation would be for the grassland habitat and so on and so forth, you know, those, those disturbances are, you know, do get tolerated by a variety of different wildlife species, and there, I, I would see no reason why they wouldn't tolerate it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, just a, my- Just a point of clarification, grassland management, you've referred to it a couple of times, is that, is that in the current- Objection. Is that in the current application, or?
Mr. Tarantino, my suggest you ask that question after the public is done.
Well, excuse me, SWAT already cross-examined this witness. It's just a point of clarification, do we have this? I wanted to know if, where it is in the docket.
You could object for him using that term if you feel it hasn't been presented.
I object.
There you go. Yeah, get it on the record, you say you object to it.
To the extent, Mr. Gianetti, that your witness can indicate where the grassland discussions are in his report.
I'm sorry, was that his question of identified grassland area? No, my question, Mr. Cook, you've referred a number of times to a grassland management program, and I believe you mentioned it at last month's hearing as well, and so I'm just wondering where this is. Objection. I mean, he's, he's cross-examining our witness.
I'll ask, then I'll ask the question. Is it anywhere in your report?
No, it was a recommendation to the landscape, the final landscaping plan, it would be done for the property. Thank you.
See how easy, Mr. Gianetti? Anyone else from the public?
Give them an inch, they take a mile.
I'm, I know what you're doing, and I'm just trying to get the record through.
Susan Galliford, Hunt Club Road.
Hi.
Hi, again. Okay, so you are stating that there would be, I'm sorry, oh, no, I'm not represented by anybody. I forgot. That it would be 20 acres or more, which is what is recommended by the Audubon Society in order to reestablish grassland birds. And I'm not a fan of lawns, which my neighbors will attest to. The noise, fume, salt, and runoff from the roads and the trucks, would that affect the grassland birds coming into this as a habitat?
Well, first of all, with regard to all runoff associated with this project has to go through the stormwater management plan, okay? And that stormwater management plan has to abide by, and has been approved by the DEP, being the strictest stormwater management regulations in the country. You know, that, that being said, there is, you know, any stormwater discharge from this project has to be, has to have- project has to be, has to have been approved by the DEP, which it has, okay? And, you know, therefore being treated for water quality, flood control, so on and so forth. So, so therefore, that would not have an impact to, I mean, first of all, it will have a lesser impact than present to the stream corridor, because now we're getting treated stormwaters going into there, whereas presently, we have untreated stormwaters. With regard to discharge into any proposed grassland habitat, am I allowed to say that? There, there is not, there's not a proposed discharge into any area like that.
Okay, so that would take care of the salt and the runoff. The noise and the fumes from the trucks, any, for the birds, for grassland birds?
Yeah, I mean, surprisingly, they, they accommodate that, okay? I mean, in all seriousness, you know, what they need more is they need habitat, they need nesting habitat, they need, they need blade leaf grass, okay, to nest, okay? And once that, I mean, right now, we have nothing, okay? Once that's established, and so on and so forth, there, yes, there is going to be a land use there that has disturbances, of course, you know, they would accommodate that.
What about lights and windows?
Lights, they accommodate. With regard to windows, from the architectural plan, I don't think these buildings have a lot of, yeah. I don't think literature has, I mean, big glass buildings, if these, if they were proposing big glass buildings, I would have a recommendation against it. Whether they would listen to me or not, who knows? But my recommendation would be against it, because of bird strikes, or whatever. With these kind of buildings, without the big pane glass, and so on and so forth, I don't, I don't think you're going to have a lot of incidental bird strikes to it.
Okay. Would this, grasslands are not just grass growing. There's certain regulations about when you can cut it, going through it so you don't crush the nests, things like that. Would this be, would these regula, recommendations be built in? Would there be some type of conservation easement required? How would that be handled?
Per my recommendation, and the applicant has already agreed to it, okay? And one of the, one of the neat things about having it done this way, and excuse my enthusiasm with it, a lot of people think that farming, even a hay, you know, a hayfield, is great for grassland birds, okay? But, and it should be, but the problem with it is, is trying to convince a farmer when to take that first cutting. And so many times, in order for it to be financially beneficial, they take that first cutting when they're still on nest. So you lose it.
Or they do it in the wrong direction.
Exactly. With, with what will be recommended here, number one will be the area, number two will be, you know, the species, and number three will be a maintenance plan, so that, you know, first of all, that it is being cut on a periodic basis, okay? Because otherwise, the other problem with grassland birds is that natural succession ruins them. Left alone, shrubs grow up, trees grow up, the grassland bird habitat is gone, if we do nothing. What's neat about something like this, and whenever you can, is to get these areas that you can actively manage.
Okay, then, the trees on edges of grasslands, grassland habitat, can be a problem, even as they are growing the hedges and things around the edges, because it turns the poor little grassland birds into prey. How, but you have mentioned having edges, I don't know what to call them, hedges, buffers around the edges. With, given that you have 20 acres spread out, how do you stop them from becoming prey? I mean, I know there's a certain amount of prey, it's mother nature.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't, the, the, the objective on something like this, when I look at it, from a, you know, from a wildlife biologist's perspective, isn't, we're not just trying to manage for one species, we're trying to manage for a diversity of species, okay? The more diverse species, the more diverse habitat, the more diverse numbers and greater numbers of different populations of wildlife species we have. And, and, like it or not, they, the passerine species will be prey, and they will be prey to the sharp-shin hawk. And, and not that I'm, you know, you know, I'm trying to make food for the sharp-shin hawk and stuff like that, but in a sense, I am. Because what we are, with a, with an increase in that kind of habitat, we're going to increase likely habitat, both of prey species and predator species. So no, we're not, I, I wouldn't have a desire to just protect grassland birds. I would like for, to encourage grassland birds, along with the whole realm of the predator ladder, to come up to it.
Okay, because we've had Duke Farms try it, and one of the problems with designing that was the 20 acres, which you said isn't being taken care of.
Miss Galliford, question, because I didn't see me screening it.
I know, he's getting antsy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
My name is Eric Bolger. I live in Montgomery Township. And my big problem, big problem I see here, is you're going to put in a warehouse, you can build a warehouse anyplace.
Question of.
Okay, the question is, this bypass is a one-lane road.
Question of his testimony.
Only his testimony is what you can ask.
So what, it's got to be environmentally?
Yes, that's the question he's taking right now.
Oh, you're not concerned about the pollution from the trucks, because you only got a one-lane road?
We've already had to.
This bypass is a monstrosity, a one-lane road going each way. Montgomery Township.
Okay, sir.
Pollution on the road there.
Sir, you're out of turn right now, this is not the.
It's not when this question.
There's been 12 hearings on the application.
You can't have trucks with no roads. You have no roads.
We had the traffic engineer already here.
Great Colmer, Taylor Avenue. Mr. Go, thank you for all your testimony. I'm sorry, I'm not affiliated with SWAT. Thank you.
Have you questioned this witness yet?
I have not. Good. My question's overall percentage. Right now, did I hear 50 acres is right now about property size? I don't know how much size, if you know? It may not matter, but I'm really looking at a percentage.
I think the overall property is 60-some acres.
Don't need to know specifics, it's more like the, the percentage of what is habitable right now. It sounds like the stream corridor is the most habitable area for this property in its current condition. That's what I gather from your testimony, is that correct? And what percentage is that right now, for the whole property, that's like inhabitable?
With saying habitable, okay, I've determined what areas of the property, okay, would, in my opinion, have significant ecological significance, okay? One being the stream corridor, the wooded stream corridor, okay, that runs along the northern part of the property. Even though they're not greatly vegetated, the tributary streams to run down through there. And the reason why is, first of all, they're, you know, they have the potential for habitat continuity. Second of all, they're a water resource, okay? And we want to protect our water resources and fishery resources. So, so therefore, that, they were considered as significant ecological resources to me.
What percentage of the area is a significant ecological resource, right now in its state?
The, the stream corridor, you figure takes up, what?
Ballpark.
I don't, I don't have that calculation, but I would assume that the wooded area associated with that stream corridor, and the woods that are on the other side of the stream, they're being protected, probably in excess of 25, 30 acres.
Okay, so we're, we're at a third to, to, a little, little more than a third, 30 to 40%?
Or, or less.
Or less, 20 to 40%? After the proposed, what is then going to be habitable? Or, I'm sorry, a significance of ecological features, please, for that language?
Well, unfortunately, I can't give a quick answer, which is going to get everybody mad, but at present, the existing habitats throughout the property, with the exception of the stream corridor, okay, which is great, okay, which is what I want protected, the tributary streams, I like them because of, of the fact that they're a water resource and the potential that they have. Because what the project has to incorporate, is the project has to incorporate a stream corridor. And that stream corridor at present is, of those tributaries, are dominated by alien invasive species.
Correct.
After, post-project, they have to plant those, okay? They have to plant those, not with mugwort and Russian olive, they have to plant them and maintain them. So those areas are actually, surprisingly, are actually going to increase usable habitat for diversity of wildlife species, more so than you have there at present, because of the alien invasive species.
And it's the suggestion to improve that area, that's what I'm hearing, so it's going to be an increase?
That's correct.
Do the buildings, there's a stream corridor buffer that's almost at the 150 feet of maybe building one on the left-hand side, if I got that correct.
And there's warehouse two, and the one on the left is warehouse two.
One on the right, that's right up against.
To the eastern side, right.
And is 150 feet good, like, are we taking up area from that stream corridor, which is the most significant, one of the most significant, you know, features of ecological concern? By going so far up to that stream corridor buffer, are we eliminating, because of that building, for the wildlife to even utilize it?
What's, what's, what's pretty cool about this, is that what my recommendation was, and a lot of times, you know, they, an applicant can't incorporate all of my recommendations. Remember what I said right from the get-go, one of my first recommendations on this was to utilize existing development, existing disturbed area, okay? That's what this warehouse is doing, obviously, okay?
It's already there, and then you're putting something.
It's already disturbed, it's already, you know, it, it's got minimal or negligible ecological value right now. Okay, I like to see that used. And, and that's what this project was able to accommodate, that recommendation of mine.
Thank you. Would it surprise you to find, would it surprise you to find out there are potential bald eagles that could utilize the stream corridor at a present, at its present moment? Would that surprise you?
I like the way you asked that question, that was really good. You, you got these lawyers twisted around here, I like it. And I'm allowed to answer that question, okay?
Not even a lawyer.
Wouldn't surprise me at all, okay? That's one of the reasons why I said it's such an important area. However, I believe in my testimony before, it was, it was the, the young lady from the, the Sari Land, whatever. And I said, you know, unfortunately, given the, given the characteristics of the stream corridor, and the width of the stream, and the depth of that stream, okay, we're, I don't think you're going to have a high utilization, or regular utilization by bald eagle, simply because of the fact that it, what it's fishing in doesn't necessarily have that, that type of, type and size of fish that it's looking for, okay? Can it, am I saying that it can occur there? Absolutely not. As I said before, if I had, if I had to produce a picture of a bald eagle in a year, would I sit out in this stream corridor and do so? I would not, okay? But could they be there? Could they utilize it? They could, which is why I consider this, one of the many, many reasons why I consider this a critical habitat for.
Follow-up. Now, post-development, would it be as equally a chance for, as you say, for a bald eagle to perhaps, and this is speaking of hypotheticals, but in sort of protecting that area for bald eagles to have the limited or whatever, you know, chance of.
I understand where you're going with that. Again, I'm going to have to go back to what I said, is that this is not prime bald eagle habitat, okay? So if, if you asked me to manage for bald eagles, I would say this is not your property, okay? Simply because the existing habitat's just not preferred habitat for it. It, it, it could utilize it, and if it was going to utilize it, that's where they would utilize it, you know, or you'd have the greatest chance of it. But would I manage for it? No, it's too small, it's too narrow, and so, so on and so forth. But, that being said, as I'm sure you might be aware, there's a lot going on with bald eagles in the state of New Jersey now, okay? So much of the fact that there's, you know, a lot of consideration, even in the state, to take them off the endangered species list. And the reason for that, not to pat ourselves on the back, as former biologist with fish and game, but we did a darn good job of managing them, okay? And now their populations are really thriving, okay? And surprisingly, the, what's surprising a lot of people, myself included, is the tolerance that bald eagle, and bald eagle nesting has to disturbances, to industrial disturbances, to residential disturbances, and so on and so forth. It's, it's surprising, and that's, so, so with that in mind, I don't, I don't think warehouses on this site are going to chase bald eagles away, because it's not prime nesting spot for bald eagles anyway.
Is it fair to say your testimony is that the likelihood of a bald eagle landing in the stream corridor utilizing these features within this property is equally like a prior and post-development?
I would say, I would say yes.
Is that a characterization? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, I've counted four, so we are going to go. Did you ask?
Well, you should have jumped up, because I want to. If they cover my question, I'm.
You get two minutes, because we're going to get Ms. Cofone started.
Rich Garman, 53, Winding Way. I'm not associated with anybody.
Hi, Rich, how you doing?
Okay, can we get back to the argument that originally brought you up here in the last meeting? You say it's a ditch, you guys say it's a stream, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, but you stated that the ditch, as you call it, collects all the water from the impervious surface.
That's correct.
Okay, so is it fair to say, after a certain amount of time, when the rain stops, the water dissipating into the stream from the ditch would stop?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted to.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, we're at 9:29, so move on to your next witness.
Thank you very much.
Yes. It's Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. Testifying this evening is a licensed professional planner. I have been practicing as such in the state of New Jersey for 28 years now. I have been qualified here in Hillsborough before both the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as about 450 other planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. My licenses are current and valid, and I'm also a court-appointed affordable housing special master.
Thank you, Ms. Cofone, I ask the board, except Ms. Cofone is an expert in the field of professional planning.
Any objections? Hearing none, we accept, please proceed.
Sure, I guess, Ms. Cofone, I guess initially, if you can just explain for the board, you know, obviously, your role and what you reviewed in preparing for this application.
Of course, yes. So what, you know, what we typically do, we didn't do anything different on this application, even though this has been an extraordinarily long application, this is not any, any different than what we've done on any other. So we review all of the application submission documents, the things that our team prepares, and then we review your professionals' review letters, originally with Mr. Maskey's review letters, and then Mr. Coys's review letters. I visit the subject property, I review the township's master plan, the township zoning ordinance, visit the site a couple of times during the processing of the application, participate in the numerous conference calls with our team that we've had on this to plan and prepare for testimony, and it's pretty much typical practice for this and the other hundreds of cases that I testify on.
So in somewhat of a unique application, obviously, the, the use is permitted, and we're not seeking any use variance or any relief with respect to the use of the property, is that correct?
Correct. The use is permitted as of right in the T E C D, T E C D district, when this application was originally reviewed by the planner, Mr. Maskey.
You asked the yes or no question, I heard.
I heard yes, and then a description beyond that.
Can you elaborate?
Thank you.
Oh, I didn't realize I just had to answer yes or no, so I apologize.
I know it's rare, Christine.
I didn't realize that that was part of the procedure, was that yes or no answers were the only answers allowable. So I'll do my best, Mr. Bernstein, to keep it to yes and no.
If your attorney asks the yes or no question, if he doesn't, that's up to you and him.
Okay.
But when he asks, have you, is this, is this zoning, is this type of application permitted in the zone? I think the answer of yes suffices, and then the description of why is sort of immaterial.
I don't know if I necessarily agree with that.
Well, expand on that, Mr. Giannetti.
So, Ms. Cofone, in addition, kind of unique with the, this site plan application, you know, there's no variance relief being sought in connection with the application, is that correct?
Correct.
And we are seeking, and there was prior testimony with respect to the stream corridor waiver and the road crossings and the Texas Pipeline's crossing, is that correct?
Yes.
And you heard that testimony previously from our, both our civil engineer, or from our civil engineer on the subject?
Yes.
If you just kind of further explain the justifications for that, that relief.
So the relief is a waiver and not a variance, and the waiver is for the crossing for the law road associated with Lot 32, Lot 32. So there is an existing road on that property, and as was testified by Mr. Cook, it was his recommendation that we utilize that road and only that road, and improve that to the extent necessary to develop the property. As he stated in his direct testimony, he was overruled, but not by the applicant, but by the officials from Hillsborough, where the fire official specifically recommended a second means of access, requiring a second crossing of that stream. So in my opinion, the relief required is the waiver is relating to, one, an existing condition, and second, the ability to meet the recommendations of the township's fire official. So therefore, it is my opinion that the waiver is necessary to, to develop the property, and to, and we certainly can do that to meet the intent of the ordinance. So the waiver is certainly justifiable.
And I think you addressed a little bit in your report as well, and I guess we'll get to the board planners' review letter dated April 12, 2023. You were present or either reviewed the transcripts or watched the video of when the architect testified on this application.
Yes.
Can we get a timeframe? I'm sorry? Can we get a timeframe, Mr. When the architect testified? And I'm raising that as an issue, Mr. Giannetti, pursuant to back and forth correspondence we have had. Your client produced a, your client produced a report, I believe, dated August 23, 2023. I'm just trying for the purposes of record to determine whether or not this preceded that report, because as we placed on record before at the last hearing, if there was going to be an amendment to the planner's report, it was due honor before March 14th, of which we have seen none. So that's why I'm trying to get a timeframe.
So let me take a step back. You're aware in September 2023, the architect testified in connection with this application?
Yes.
Before his testimony, did you consult with him on the issue of Mr. Coys's April 2023 review letter questioning whether or not a height variance was required?
Yes.
May I, one more question?
Can I finish my questioning?
Only to complete this part of it, was that part of your report in August of 2023?
Of my August 17th?
Has she talked to the architect?
No.
Seriously?
That her report includes the conversation or conversation she had.
Well, we're not going to play this game, that she has to say who she spoke with? Okay.
Ms. Giannetti, we're not playing a game. We have established a series of rules regarding the reports from the experts, everybody's experts.
Are these rules anywhere in the town ordinance or in the planning board's rules, or is this just special to us?
No, you're not special. I, bad news, but you're not special. It's been, it's been the position of this board for at least the last two years regarding planners and other experts providing reports, putting them together, turning them in at least 10 days in advance of their testimony. We asked in this case if your client was going to update her report in advance of that because of the holidays and the way in which the dates work. The only item we have received since her August 23 report is an updated CIS that she provided, which I'm assuming we're not testifying to at this point. Therefore, I'm just trying to ascertain whether or not your client's testifying on matters that come subsequent to her report, which is outside the scope of what she can testify to unless she's going to amend her report.
And Ms. Cofone, in your report, did you specifically refer to a May 9, 2023 letter from the architect to the board addressing the height issue?
Yes.
And you had that letter available when you prepared your August 2023 report?
Yes.
And May comes before August?
Yes.
This last part was unnecessary, and I appreciate the clearing of the record on that. Thank you.
And so can you just, following on the architect's letter to the board, as well as the testimony that you've heard in the comment in the review letter, just also opine on the subject?
My opinion on the subject is based on the township's definition of height, that the height variance is not required.
And based upon that definition, you know, where is, is height measured from and how is it measured?
In Hillsborough Township, the definition of building height is the vertical distance from the grade to the top of the highest gable, slope of a hip roof, or otherwise the highest point of the roof. When a building faces on more than one street, the height shall be measured from the average of the grades at the center of each street front.
So based upon the town ordinance, if you're a corner lot fronting on two streets, you take the average from the, from the center of the building facing the street, correct?
Of both streets.
Of both streets.
It says shall, and it tells you, it directs you to both street frontages. So the shall language is a requirement, it's, it's not aspirational, it's required. So it would, in my opinion, in that scenario that you presented, be from both street frontages.
And logically to follow, when there's no, when you're only fronting on one street, and as the architect testified too, you would measure it from the center of the building facing that one street?
Per the ordinance definition, you would take the height to be measured from the average of the grades at the center of each street front.
And you're in agreement with the, the architect's testimony as to the height conforms based upon that definition?
Yes.
And that height is 39 feet and 11 inches?
Correct.
Now, there was a question in the board planners' review letter, if you measured it from the rear, where the loading docks are, it could, you know, there's points where it's 43 feet, 11 inches. And if you can explain, I know the architect testified to it and address in his letter, but how that measurement is made?
So the architect testified that on both Building 1 and Building 2, if you went to the elevation of the building where the loading docks are, given the fact that those loading docks grade down, that there would be a three foot and 11 foot distance above the maximum height requirement in that area. However, given the fact that that's not the elevation that you calculate the height from, we don't need to seek relief for that.
In the event you did have to seek relief with respect to that dimension on the rear of the building, the 43 feet, 11 inches, would the applicant, you know, if you walk through and maybe explain, A, the positive, negative criteria for such relief, and whether the applicant satisfies it?
Yes. So in the event that relief was required, which I do not think it is, I agree with our architect, and I agree with Mr. Maskey, who originally opined on this application in his review letter, that we meet all of the bulk requirements of the T E C D zone. In the event that it were determined that we need the variance relief, I believe the relief could be justified under the C2 section of the municipal land use law. And what that is, is the flexible C, where in the absence of any hardship, the board can grant the variance relief if you find that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced. In my report, I cited criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations. The additional three feet and 11 inches can certainly be supported on this site. The site is larger than the minimum required for the zone, and substantially so. But even more importantly than that, the setbacks for this structure are well beyond the required in the zone. For example, the structure on Lot 32, which we refer to as Building 2, is setback 484 feet to the side yard setback to the east, and 191 feet to the west. It maintains a front yard setback of 884.9 feet from Homestead Road. So in my opinion, the site can certainly, there's certainly appropriate space for, for the building. On Building 1, similarly, the setbacks are substantial. The rear yard setback there is required to be 150 feet, where we're proposing 375.8. Similarly, to the east and west, we have 219 and 230 feet of setback. And again, a substantial setback to the front of 190. So these loading docks are occurring on the, the rear of the building, they're not facing streets, and they're certainly set far, far in excess of what the zone contemplated for setbacks. So I do think sufficient space is appropriate. Criteria I talks about a desirable visual environment. These are aesthetically pleasing designs for warehouse buildings. They will certainly not be particularly visible from any vantage point, and we provided elevations that depicted that. And lastly, criteria M talks about an efficient use of the land. The subject property falls well below the coverage requirements for the zone. I believe that this is an efficient layout that takes advantage, or and takes into considerations, not takes advantage, but takes into consideration the environmental constraints on the subject property, and provides a development that is certainly consistent with the zone plan. Statutorily, the board has to find that only one or more purposes of the land use law are advanced. I cited three, so if you didn't agree with all of them, or if you agreed with one of them, we meet our burden of proof. With respect to the negative criteria for the granting of the C2 variance, the land use law does not ask you to hold us or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance outweigh any detriment. Here you have a conforming, substantial tax-producing ratable that is being developed in accordance with the permitted uses, as well as the stated purposes, and all of the bulk criteria of the T E C D zone. So I see no substantial detriment to either the public good or the zone plan if the board were to find that that variance is required and grant the relief, which again, I do not believe that based on the structure of your ordinance and based on the definition of height, which uses that language shall, right? When an ordinance encourages something, it says it should, or it should strive to, or where appropriate. Those are things that we use in terms of art that we use as planners, and say, it's not really required, but if you can do it and it makes good planning sense, then go ahead and do it. That's not how your ordinance reads here, it reads shall. And when I teach planning and zoning courses to new planning board members and planning board secretaries, one of the things that I teach is that each ordinance is different. When I talk about how ordinances can be different, one of the things that I utilize is the definition of building height or floor area ratio to talk about how different towns do things differently. So because that's how you measure height here in Hillsborough, doesn't mean that's how Branchburg is doing it, or Montgomery's doing it. So we have to be governed here in Hillsborough, how you define height. So I have a hard time when your ordinances say and state specifically and clearly that it shall be calculated from each street frontage, to then take elevations of a building that don't front a street, and apply the height calculation to that. Nonetheless, I have provided the statutory criteria under the C2 section of the statute if it is determined that the relief is required.
In addition, in the board planners' review letter dated April 12, 2023, there was, included the definition in the town of a truck terminal, and question whether this use would qualify as a truck terminal, if you can provide any testimony on that subject.
And that was also addressed in my report as well. I think that that is certainly not a position that I agree with. The definition of truck terminal in the ordinance in Hillsborough is an originating or terminating point for trucks, which may include servicing vehicles for trucks and comfort facilities. The existence or proposed location of storage or warehousing of items transported by trucks shall not be deemed to change the character of a use which meets the foregoing definition of truck terminal. So this to me is certainly not a truck terminal. When, when I look at that ordinance definition, I look at that specifically to say, you can't have a truck terminal, and then tag on some warehousing or storage and say, oh, but we're really a warehouse. So I think very clearly, the ordinance intends to limit those things, that would be a truck terminal, and have an ancillary warehouse, and then allow the use. The ordinance specifically prohibits motor freight terminals, motor and truck transfer stations, motor and truck depots, motor and truck storage sites, truck stops, and truck repair facilities. So in my opinion, when you look at what a truck terminal is, truck terminals would have things associated them, like with, with the truck terminal, you may have reservable showers, you may have public laundry, you may have game rooms, you may have mechanical facilities for the trucks. This is not a truck terminal. This is exactly as was described by the applicant as a warehousing and potential distribution facility. It is not a truck terminal. It is not, in my opinion. A truck terminal is not consistent with your ordinance definition of truck terminal, which in my opinion, actually discourages you from trying to bring a truck terminal in under the guise of having ancillary warehousing of items. So this is not, in my opinion, what I would, I would consider a truck terminal. I don't think that this is what your ordinance contemplates as a truck terminal, and I believe that this is consistent with the T E C D zone, the use.
And in addition, in the, the board planners' review letter, it wasn't entirely clear on the comment, it's on page four, where it says, I have significant concerns related to the entirety of the proposed use, and whether it complies with the township code and master plan on a variety of levels, ranging from scale and size of the project to the nature of the use that the applicant's proposing, just to mention a few, and the applicant should address these concerns and demonstrate compliance with the regulations and the ordinance of the town. If you can just comment on the size and scale of the project.
So I can comment on that.
Objection, objection not addressed in any of your memos, so I don't think you can comment on that.
Yes, she can. She concluded that from a planning standpoint, the proposed building mass and intensity are appropriate in the context of the site and the surrounding area.
Did not address scale and scope in any of her memos.
Can we point out in any of Ms. Cofone's documents provided, that we just think she addressed scale and scope of the project?
Page four.
So Ms. Cofone, in your opinion, is, is building mass and intensity synonymous with scale and scope?
Absolutely, and those are the two things that speak directly to scale and scope.
Objections, I realized, we tried to fly over. Counselor?
I was just about to say, Mr. Bernstein, you asked a question of where in the report it is.
Right.
Mr. Giannetti then continued to ask a question, not where in the report is it? So Mr. Tarantino's objection, which you seem to have been at least exploring, is still standing, and we still don't have an answer as where in the report.
Let's try again. Where in the report, Mr. Giannetti, is the discussion of scale and scope specifically mentioned?
Page four.
Not building mass, not building, which, which report?
So it's on page four of my report, which starts a new point. Lastly, from the planning standpoint, the proposed.
What's the date of that report? Which date?
It's the same report, August 17.
There were, there are two reports, that's why I'm asking the right question.
So on page.
Wait, wait. Let everybody take a look at it in case somebody has an objection.
It's at the top of, it's the second paragraph on page four, right above the headline Fiscal Impact Report.
It neither refers to the T E C D. In fact, Mr. Coys's letter doesn't say scale or scope either.
Mr. Chairman, can I
No, it's scale and size. Okay, hold, I want to hear my attorney.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest that Ms. Cofone answer the question? And if Mr. Tarantino or any of the other objectors of the public have questions regarding this testimony, there's an appropriate place and time for that. I would, however, Mr. Giannetti, caution that your client is very good at running through things before everybody else is done talking. Can she wait until all the other discussions before she answers the question?
All right, just to be clear, though, she's not my client.
Well, she's, she's your client's representative. How about that?
She's, yeah, she's our witness.
Thank you.
No, no, I'm good. So, so wait, I'm still not understanding that the board is going to
Mr. Bernstein, you made it very clear that The board is going to permit Mr. Tarantino the answer to that question. If you believe that it is not addressed anywhere in her report and or have issues regarding her testimony, the appropriate time to request, to deal with that is when you cross-examine Ms. Cofone.
I, I thought she wasn't permitted to testify on anything she hasn't put in her report.
Well, apparently it's in her report. Now, you may disagree that what, whether it is or it isn't, but the contention is that it's on page four of her report. So.
I mean, I think as long as you're talking things with specifically the words mass and intensity, that's, that's the language that's used in reports. So let's keep it confined to mass and density.
Ms. Cofone, you, including your report and, and your opinion as to the proposed building mass and intensity, was that in response to Mrs., Mr. Coys's review letter where he noted his concern about the scale and size?
Yes.
Maybe just elaborate on that.
I will be glad to elaborate on that. My report walks through several different topics. It refers to required design waivers. It refers to a design waiver standard.
No, this, this is, the question relates to where the issue in the response to Mr. Coys's comments. We've now deviated again on the issue of what's covered. Let's stick to the question asked. If you're unclear what the question is, I'll ask Mr. Lombardozi to read back the question.
I'm going to say this was limited to the height variance issue only because that's where your comment about mass and intensity comes into. So anything other than height variance hasn't been put, hasn't been addressed, even though it's Mr. Coys, you're citing Mr. Coys's memo or report. The only area we're talking about mass and intensity is with regards to a height variance.
So the section of my report by stating lastly, from the planning standpoint, is intended to be a transition from one point to another. We use that term lastly because we're transferring into making a new point. So on page four of my planning report, I say, I state, and it reads, lastly, from the planning standpoint, the proposed building mass and intensity are appropriate in the context of the site and the surrounding area.
But then your next section is going into fiscal impact report.
Correct.
And then from there, we're talking about truck terminals. I'm not sure, because where you've placed that, you placed it in a section that is part, that says height variance. So.
I'm, I'm sorry. This game we're playing is ridiculous. Let me finish.
No, because there's objections here. So we're trying to clarify.
So you just want to preclude her from testifying on the subject? If that's, if that's what the board's ruling is, then let's just make that into the record.
No, because what, what your, what your witness is saying is that paragraph is talking about something beyond the height variance with the section that that paragraph is put into.
But her testimony is that's what it was referring to. If you don't want to hear her testimony, if you're going to preclude her from testifying on it, let's just get that in the record and we'll move on. They are going to have an opportunity to cross-examine. She's not finishing tonight. So they're going to hear her testimony and they're going to have weeks, months, whatever it's going to be, to cross-examine her. There's no surprise. There's no shock. But if the board's ruling is you're going to preclude her from testifying on the subject.
But you keep asking the board to do that, hoping that the board will say that. The board wants your client, your client's representative to answer questions related to the context upon which it's being asked for the purpose of the record. This will not drag on for months and years to come. The objectors will not get months and years to request a cross-examine. The fact of the matter remains is let's, you want to put stuff in the record? It can be put in the record in accordance with the record. If you were addressing responses of Mr. Coys's report, let's deal with Mr. Coys's report. And the context here has been height variance and why the height variance that Mr. Coys determined was in existence, according to Ms. Cofone, doesn't exist. I believe it's all in the record. Next.
But what's, but his, the paragraph she's addressing on the, I mean, Mr. Coys's say, what, what he means by that and whether it was just in relation with the height variance.
Okay. And the answer to that question is? It's your client's, it's your representative's report here. You've got Mr. Coys's report. She's disagreed with the report.
So I authored the report, my report, and I can tell you what the intent of my report was. We walked through our, my opinion on whether the height variance was required, and then the statutory proofs, positive and negative. And we concluded the negative and then we moved on to another point, which was the mass and intensity, which I, as a planner practicing for 28 years, is directly and inextricably linked to the scale and scope of a project. That's my opinion.
And I agree. I'm just saying, and this is what's causing the objection, you didn't create a new section of this report. It's called, whatever you want to call it.
Scale and scope.
Scale and scope. He didn't create a scale and scope section here. So this, anyone reading this could interpret this that the mass is strictly addressing the height variance.
With all due respect, Chairman, so what? She's going to testify to it and they're going to have plenty of time to cross, and to, to, wait till I'm done. They'll have plenty of time to hear her tonight, review the transcripts, watch the videos, and then cross-examine her at the next meeting. What is the prejudice to the objectors?
The so what is that we don't believe that this has been addressed in, in Ms. Cofone's report and nor did we have such a, such a report to have our planner address, address the size and scale and scope in response to, to Ms. Cofone's arguments. So we didn't have an opportunity to have our expert produce a report that, that would address Ms. Cofone's arguments. So it's news to me today that this sentence in the section around building height is somehow addressing scale and scope. That's news.
Building mass and intensity is the same as scale and scope. So we're just wasting our time and we're not going to get through the witness and you're precluding from testimony.
So my, my, my comments to this is Ms. Cofone went through great lengths to chapter and verse all the statutes. Ordinance is from the language, language from the ordinance. But she didn't use scale and scope. She used different words. So the report is silent as to that. She didn't, she didn't testify to that. I mean, excuse me, report on that. She used different words and she was very clear with reciting the statute word for word. And she got to the ordinance and now we're creating a new meaning that's not in the ordinance. The words means and density don't go into that.
Scale and scope is nowhere.
No, no. Scale and scope is not the same. That's not what the ordinance says.
Who's referring to the ordinance? We're referring to Mr. Coys's review letter, which he doesn't even say scale and scope. He says scale and size. Building mass and intensity is the same thing. I can't believe we're arguing over this.
You want to opine? Your report that apparently is at issue.
While they keep saying the ordinance talks about scale and scope, and it doesn't. We're talking about a review. So go ahead, Ms. Coys.
I'm unsure how I could opine related to trying to say what Ms. Cofone is referring to.
Opine is what you're
My reference in my report has to do with, yes, I used a different word, but I was, it was coming from the reference that's made in the ordinance about size and scope. That's, that's where that was coming from. That's, that's what I wrote. Those words in my report. Sorry, this microphone's not working very well. Let me go back to it. So on April 12th, I made a reference to, I have significant concerns related to the entirety of the proposed use and whether it complies with the township code and township master plan on a variety of levels ranging from the scale and size of the project to the nature of the use that the applicant is proposing. And then I say, just to mention a few. That is coming from a section, or I was inspired by the section of the ordinance that requires that the development has to be developed at the appropriate size and scope or size and scale. Apologize. Let me see. I am, I am in here. Let me take a look. So in 188-107.2B, it states permitted principal uses. All uses shall be provided at a scale and size that is appropriate for the district. It goes on to say something else, but it has to do with the other principal uses. So I wasn't going to further elaborate on that. Is there anything else you'd like me to answer, Mr. Bernstein?
Appreciate. And I'm assuming, Mr. Giannetti, that Ms. Cofone's report is a response, among others, to Mr. Coys's. So why don't we all try to use the same phraseology that to Mr. Coys's report as a response in the extent that it is addressed in her report of August of 23?
Sure. Ms. Cofone, in that statement where you referred to building mass and intensity, if you can just, A, was in response to that comment and, and your opinion with respect to that?
Sure. So when you're talking about the scale and scope of a project or the building mass and the intensity of a project, as I refer to it, they're governed by
Again, scale and size. Part of the reason, I suspect, we have spent the last five minutes going back and forth on this is because we're using words that were not ever used to begin with. So let's deal with scale and size and not scale and scope.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as a planner, I would be unbelievably challenged to find that a project where the lot coverage was so far below that permissible in the district at 23.1% versus 60% on lot 32, which is building two, at 31.9%, where 60% is permissible on lot 33 or building one, where the setbacks are so far in excess of what is required in the underlying zoning for both side and rear. And when you have a zone that has setbacks, as the T E C does, where it increases the setback for a side yard for when you abut residential, it increases the side yard from 20 feet, I believe, to 150. And then for the rear yard, it increases it from 75 feet to 150 where you're abutting a residential. So when you have a zone that already addresses scale and size with its bulk criteria, and then you have an applicant that is not violative of any of the bulk criteria, setbacks or coverage, right? Coverage is one of the things that we use as planners to regulate scale and size. I am very challenged as a planner to come to the conclusion that we are somehow out of character with the scale and size of the development envisioned for a zone when we don't actually violate and are quite far under the lion's share of the bulk criteria regulating development in that zone.
So I'm going to object to that entire testimony because none of it, literally none, was addressed in her report. Not one sentence that she said was from her report. So all the things that she talked about setbacks, talking about, you know, the, how much, you know, coverage of the property, none of that was addressed in her report. So I'm not really sure how we're supposed to be applying this rule that says that she's, that the experts are not permitted to testify on topics that they don't address in a, in a written report. This is, so I strongly object to that last sent, that last statement.
Counter.
A, again, this rule, I don't know what rule we're talking about. It's not in any of the board rules. It's not in any of the ordinance. It's just, let me finish. Two, she's not testifying to anything new. Months ago, Mr. Ford has testified as to the coverage, as to the setbacks. You look at the plans, that information's right there. She's not testifying or opining as to anything new as to what the coverages are or what the setbacks are.
I mean, first of all, I believe there is a board rule about, about specifically for planners, planners having to only be able to testify on topics that are covered in their report. I believe there is a board rule.
Topics, topics. They don't have to say word for word what's in their report. And the fact that you're trying to limit the testimonies, only transparency of, you just don't want to enter the record because you're not going to like what you're going to hear.
Mr. Bernstein, I think we're at time.
Well, I would just ask, we don't have any further direct testimony of Ms. Cofone. We believe we covered Mr. Coys's comments in his review letter. I would just ask if you felt we haven't, let us know so we can make sure to address it at the next meeting.
I'm sorry, you're asking, you're asking me?
Yes.
Can you repeat that again?
So
This is new.
Yes, we don't have any further direct testimony. We believe we covered the questions where you basically said either the applicant should present testimony or would like to hear.
Thank you.
We want to just make sure we've covered it and if, on the topics, and if not, just identify it and we'll make sure to address it at the next meeting.
Thank you. Understood. Will do. I'll have questions myself, so.
We're ending. Okay. Mr. Coys, do you need a date?
I'm, I'm
Mr. Bernstein is
Underdesignated schedule for the moment.
He's flying this plane, yes.
We're looking at a portion of the evening of May the 9th.
No.
So we have a, our, our witness has a
You didn't even have the answer. The witness
I can't do it. I have
I guess, you want, I'm trying to offer up time. So, you know, the next time I have available is a portion of June the 6th. And I'm, underline the word portion. We already have two applications on.
I'll be
I would, I see July 11th is open.
Can we invite Christine to go to London? We could all go.
I'll be on a plane to London.
July 11th, Mr. Giannetti?
Yes.
Why can't we meet?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. May 2nd.
May 2nd is gone. May 2nd, we have an affordable housing application that we are determined to get started and to hear more of.
But it seems like it doesn't get started. So if it opens up that night.
It's going to get started by hell or high water.
And, and actually, I think it would be better if we can try to get you here for a full three hours because there's a lot of, you know.
Sure.
Sure. All five objectors, or at least four out of five will be cross-examining, you know, and let alone members of the public. So I
If we could have, if we could have July 11th, that's open, that would be
All right. July 11th, so therefore we need an extension on the TOD. I would ask for September the 30th, and I would make that request because the board does not meet in August normally, and it isn't going to meet in 2024 either. So.
For September the 30th?
For TOD. I'm just, I don't know what the next date will be, but I'm just saying to you, we're not going to, this, the July 11th meeting is the last meeting until after the board's normal recess in August. And I don't know what September is going to look like right now.
Well, I guess if, if, if we're going to give an extension to September 30th, can we also get a hearing date in September? And we're not finishing on the 11th.
September 12th. I would, can I check, Mr. Coys? At the moment, it's not on my schedule, but let me make the point also to objectors. You need to start making sure that you're, A, your witnesses are available and B, your reports are in. September 12th. And that may also be a partial right now. We're a very popular board. You would think that we were giving things away. You would think that we were giving things away.
Sorry.
So was there a second date?
The second date is September the 12th. So, Mr. Chairman, it's a motion to extend this hearing to Thursday, July 11th at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard. And an extension of the time of decision until September 30th, 2024. At the July meeting, we will indicate the continuing extension for the September 12th hearing.
Okay.
So right now, this is, this is the hearing for the 11th.
So may have a motion to continue to the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr.?
I can't vote.
Ms. Rowach is not here.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committee Member Fani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chickarrelly?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pizzi?
Yes.
Chair Sriraj?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I also would like a motion to cancel the April 25th, 2024 business meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Italy?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Committee Member Fani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chickarrelly?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pizzi?
Yes.
Chair Sriraj?
Yes.
So just a reminder, our next meeting is May 2nd, 2024, 7:00 PM or soon after we start.
Soon to start, and it is going to be Sherman Province.
Right, and it's, it's going to be a good one for you, for the newer members. So with that, I'll entertain a motion of adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Go on, favor. Aye. We're adjourned. See everyone in a few weeks.